Ms. Buchanan, are you ready to begin?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening. My name is Greg Caddis, Chairman of the City Hazlet's Planning and Zoning Commission. Today's date is Monday, February 22, 2021. Time is 6:30 PM. In order to confirm, we have a quorum present and call the meeting to order. I will do a roll call vote of the planning against zoning commission members. Dennis Hillborne.
Here.
Tori Snedeker.
Sorry.
Tori, are you there? Okay, Mr. Wallach.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Thank you. Mr. Wallach.
Here.
Mr. McCusson.
Here.
Mr. Flaxbart.
Here.
And Greg Caddis is here. So we do have a quorum present. So the meeting is called to order. But I'd like to begin with just best practices for those attending our virtual meeting. Please make sure that you keep your microphone muted if you're not speaking. If there is an opportunity to speak, we will call on you by attendance. And if you would like to be recognized, please put a note in the chat field. That way I recognize that you would like to contribute to one of the public hearing opportunities that will be available this evening. During the video teleconference meeting, the purpose of the chat again is so that I can recognize us. So please use that. Don't just speak up and chime in in the middle of a conversation. That becomes very disruptive. So please follow the simple guidelines. Keep yourself muted. Use the chat field so that we recognize you and please put your name there so I can call on you by name. Okay, well, the next item, we'll go over a couple items of community interest. So on the February 17th, Mr. Golden, our mayor, declared an emergency declaration for the winter storm and the damage that resulted. And then for the general election that's occurring on May 1st, 2021, the candidates for all of the positions that are on the ballot have been named. For the office of mayor, Bob Golden, who is the incumbent, will be running against Mr. Halsey. And for council member place two, Mr. Williams will be running against Kerry Ricketts. And council place four, Patricia Hillborne will be, who is the incumbent, will be running against, I hope I get this right, Hector Nahara. And if Mr. Nahara is here this evening, and you want to correct me on your pronouncing your senior name, I would welcome that. All right, moving on, can agenda item four, consider for approval, the planning and zoning commission meeting minutes from our January 25, 2021 regular meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Okay, a motion made to approve. Is there a second?
Yeah, Paul Wallach seconded it.
Paul seconds it. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Hillborne.
Yes.
Snedeker.
Yes.
Mr. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. McCusson. Jim. Mr. Flaxbart.
Yes.
And Greg Caddis is a yes. And we did not record a vote for Mr. McCusson.
I said yes.
Okay, I did not hear that, but we'll record that as a yes. So the motion passes unanimously. Moving on, agenda item five, a poll, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act on a recommendation regarding a preliminary plat of 294 acres situated in the Eldridge Hopkins and W M Scott surveys resulting in 494 single family lots and 14 open spaces. The property is generally located north of Blue Mountain Road, approximately one mile east of FM 156 and a half mile west of Harmon Road within the city of pass at Tarrant County, Texas. We're going to begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, yeah, commission members. The preliminary plat is for the sweetgrass subdivision. As you'll all recall, that was approved by city council in January of this year. This plat provides for 494 lots and 14 common space slots. The development is being broken down into two phases, majority of phase one being located on the east side of the development. As a part of the preliminary plat process, like I said during the zoning stage, we reviewed the preliminary utility and drainage plans for that. And city engineer has reviewed those plans in compliance with our city standards. The preliminary plat meets the requirements of the city subdivision ordinance in the Texas level government code. And we also advertised this as a public hearing as required by our subdivision regs as well. I can answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Okay, I see that Mr. Pedego, you're on. Are you speaking as the applicant this evening?
Yes, I'm here. Commissioner Brett Pedego with Chair Mano 101, Claretton Ranch Road. You know, I didn't bring a presentation. Basically, the layout that you see on the preliminary plat before you and I, it's the same that was in the zoning or, you know, pretty close to the zoning application. We've made a few modifications based on better information that we've received. But it's basically the same thing. And, you know, here for any questions that you may have, I also have Tom Dayton that's here as well, who's our engineer. And if there's some technical information that you need or have questions about, he should be able to answer those about this plat.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pedego. Appreciate you being in attendance this evening. Okay, if there's no other information you want to share, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against agenda item 5A? And I did get a note that Mr. Halsey would like to speak on agenda item 5A.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to 5A, I oppose this. And I'm going to have to reference our comprehensive plan. It's just a coincidence. I maybe three, four years ago, a comprehensive plan was developed. And it used this very same property as an example to show what a straight up half acre lot compliance would look like. And then how a PD would be used for that same piece of property. In both instances, the comprehensive plan only allowed for 248 homes. And the PD is still had 248 homes, but with the objective of obtaining greater community green space. So I'm just struggling how we are able to do this when the local government code specifically cites that our zoning and developments are approved in accordance with our comprehensive plan. That's the issue with me. If you can comment on that, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Okay, as a reminder, we are not under any obligation to respond to questions, but your comments are certainly noted and appreciated, Mr. Halsey. Thank you.
You're not obligated, but you can if you so desire. I mean, we are citizens. You're our representative.
Well, when we move to, when we close the public hearing, then the planning and zoning commission members will have an opportunity to ask questions and follow up on comments such as yours with the city staff and the applicants.
Well, I'm looking for a response.
Okay.
But I appreciate it. I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Halsey. I do not see anybody else's name recognized in the chat field. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against agenda item 5A?
Yes, I would like.
Chair, this is Diana Buchanan. Kitty Wertz has asked to speak regarding this item.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me? This is Kitty Wertz.
We can hear you.
I'd like to speak against this item. I'm in agreement with Mr. Halsey. This development, I do not believe me the Hazlet public land use development. I feel the lots are way too small. And I also would like to hear what the comments are of the planning and zoning committee as to why you would approve this development. The community is against this development. And yet you continually ignore our comments. I want to hear what you have to say as to why you think this is in the best interest of the community. I will leave it at that because I think that's a very pointed request. And I think the community deserves an answer before any vote is taken on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And is there, are there any other individuals who would like to speak for or against? And then I do not see any names in the chat field. Do you, Ms. Buchanan?
I would like to speak.
Did you put, did you put your name in the chat field so I could recognize you?
I could not find the spot to do so. This is Mike Rhodes.
Okay, Mr. Rhodes, I'll recognize you at this time. Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, having, having served on P and Z for a number of years and been involved in a number of planning and zoning committee and presentations by various neighborhood developments that had, that had come before P and Z and city council. You know, the Caraway development was communicated and and was described as being a transition development from Interstate 35 into the half acre developments of the R1, R2 developments. And what we see is that the development now with sweetgrass is even smaller lots than what you have in Caraway. You know, when I did the, the numbers, it's somewhere in the neighborhood. And I would like for you to, at some point, if you could state how many of the lots are half acre? How many are in the 6250 number per square versus 8,000? Because what I, what I kind of approximated was somewhere around 100 of the lots of the 498 lots are half acres and then the rest of them are, are below that number with probably 250 to 300 in the 6250 to 8,000 square foot, square foot lot size, which is significantly, you know, you're talking about one safe, one seventh to one sixth of an acre, which is not the R1, the R2 of the plan. And I know that it appears that you're doing creative math in that you're calculating the size of, you know, how many houses per square by discounting the land that is not usable in the flood plain. So I definitely am saddened to hear, one, that there is this motion and decision to go against a comprehensive development plan of the R1, R2. Creative mathematic calculations to, to make it appear that it is half an acre because there's 200 and almost 300 acres in this plot, in this tract of land. But it's just, it just saddens me that we continue to go down a path that's contrary to the reasons why people move to Hazlet. There's an effort to create rooftops and push forward high density developments. And it's sad that people call in, people speak at public city council meetings. And yet you as P and Z, as city council, continue to move forward in creating a community that's not supported by the majority of your citizens. So I just, I wanted to make that statement and just wanted to, you know, my hope is, one, that you'll listen. Two, that you'll respectfully represent the citizens of Hazlet. That would be my hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. The next person to be recognized is Ms. Radford.
Hi, guys. My name is Sandra Radford. I live adjacent to the Brumall development at 637 Blue Mountain Road E. I didn't see anything on this plat regarding the gas well line. And I would just like it to be in the preliminary plat if we could possibly find an alternative for that road instead of it running along our property line. I know at the city council meeting, they did not want it going down the spine road because the spine road was a concrete road and they didn't want the upkeep of that. Just hoping that somewhere we can maybe find an alternative to take it off of our property line. I didn't see that in here, so just kind of wanted to make that comment. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Radford. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against agenda item 5A? If not, there's a statement that we are going to read into the record. Ms. Buchanan, would you kindly read into the record a statement that was offered by one of our citizens or two of our citizens?
Yes, this was received via email from Patricia Parker of 219 Broadmoor Drive. I would like this letter to be on the record for tonight's PID meeting. I am asking that you reconsider the sweetgrass development and reject the PD that is currently presented and require half acre lots that is currently in our city's comprehensive plan. We do not want low density zoning. And then the second one I have is from Jack Parker of 219 Broadmoor Drive. I am asking that you please reconsider the sweetgrass development at tonight's PID meeting. I am also asking that you reject the PD that is currently presented and require half acre lots per home site as expressed in our current comprehensive plan. We, the citizens of Hazlet, do not want low density zoning. I would like this to be entered into record, please. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. And I do not see any other names entered in the chat field. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up for discussion. So, Mr. Morrison, if I could, I'd like to just make some points of clarification or ask your assistants in making some points of clarification so that, one, we, we understand as the planning and zoning commission, what, what is actually our options for action tonight? And then, two, I want to make sure that we have a well informed public on where we're at in the process of this development moving forward. So I'll restate what I know and then you can correct me if I'm wrong. So at our last planning and zoning commission meeting, this was on our agenda to be reviewed for a zoning change to a planned development agreement. That was approved by, I think, a three, five, a three to two vote. I went to the city council, city council approved that planned development. And now it's at the point where the applicant is submitting a preliminary plat based on the conditions that were outlined in that planned development agreement with the city that was approved by the city of Hazlet council. Is that correct?
That is correct. Just in short, to summarize that, the, the application you have for you tonight is a preliminary plat and part of the subdivision requirements that are put in place. So that preliminary plat has to meet the zoning requirements. This preliminary plat, as submitted, does meet those zoning requirements that the city council has approved.
And, and because it administratively meets all of the requirements, we all, we basically are at a position where it, as long as it meets those requirements, it needs to be moved forward as it approved. Is that correct?
That is, yes, sir. That's correct. Per local government code of the state of Texas, if a preliminary plat meets the requirements of the zoning and all other subdivision ordinance requirements, then it has to be approved. It's, it's not a discretionary approval.
Okay, and based on your review of the preliminary plat, do you find any inconsistencies between the preliminary plat and the planned development agreement that was approved by our city council?
No, I'll go one step further and say, since the hot topic is density, the planned development that was approved by city council was approved for 588 lots. This preliminary plat only approves 494 lots.
Okay, I have no other clarifications or questions. Does anybody else have any other questions that they would like to ask the city staff?
Oh, this is Jim Marcusson. This, this week, we had, I think I've all got a new appreciation for our water system and perhaps of its weaknesses. Can, and maybe this is for Travis, can you talk a little bit about how we're going to handle another 494 homes on the same system?
I'm sorry, did you close the public hearing?
Yes, we did. That was, that was one, Mr. McCusson's on the planning and zoning commission, so he can ask that question.
Okay, so this is Travis Atchianazio, city engineer. Yes, you are correct that we did actually lose water this week. It wasn't a Hazlet problem. It was a supply problem from the city of Fort Worth, compounded by losing power at their pump station. We have plenty of water. Our tanks were full when we got cut off by Fort Worth. We have a new water tower being built by the Lutera Development, just on the west side of the railroad tracks. We had a water master plan prepared that took our comprehensive plan to make sure that density of two units per acre was used in this area in, in the water master plan. So we have plenty of water, plenty of supply issues, you know, sands power being cut. So there should not be any issue in supplying water to these additional 494 lots.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from the planning and zoning commission?
This is Paul Wallach. Mr. Pedego is to ask him if this originally went 588 lots, we looked at a couple of months ago, and it's now 494. Where were those changes made? Where that reduction, where was that reduction made?
This is Brett Pedego. To answer your question, there were a couple of scenarios that were provided to planning and zoning as well as council that showed for higher density development occurring in part of the development. And the, we, when we came back in, you, you guys had suggested and made a motion that we take away what we were calling the urban residential area of higher density development. You guys asked us to reduce that and change it to more of a single family development. And we did that. That went on to council. And it was discussed at council, and I think council knowingly knew that we were going to end up somewhere in the low 500s. When the, the motion was made, I don't think it was read into the record that we were going with the lower density. But because that's what we said we would do and because that was the intent of the motion, we reduced that density down. And you have before you what, what's presented now and what got approved as a zoning exhibit in the, that zoning exhibit showed this number of lots that was approved at council and at P and Z. So all, you know, the, the density number was higher on the approved amount. We knew it was going to go lower. I think it was even asked at the council meeting what we thought the, the density would end up being. And we, we said we thought it would end up being around this amount. So a lot of this was decided whenever council decided to lower that density. And, you know, this plat is just kind of conforming to what that lower density looked like. But that was an action at council that reduced the density from the 580 to 500. Does that answer the question?
Thank you. Yeah, that's kind of what I thought. I just wanted, I thought it'd be good to hear that.
Yeah, are there any other questions?
I'd like to ask, what, you say there were small modifications. What were they? Was it just that section or are there other modifications?
No, the modifications I'm referring to are more of what would be brought into some of the final design. We went out and potholed, which a pothole is, we go out and we hire a company to use a vac truck, which is a vacuum based truck that pulls the dirt and soil away from gas lines safely to find out and locate the exact location of where those gas lines and what depth they are. And through that process, we, you know, made minor alterations just to make sure that we stayed clear of a safe distance away from those gas lines and none of our utilities or things like that would, would conflict with where they were. So most of those minor modifications that I'm talking about referred to that. Some was some circulation and requirements that fire wanted us to look at. So we made some changes based on some of those comments. So the plat that's before you has been through a couple of rounds of comments from staff and those modifications that were made to make sure it's in conformance with the, the city subdivision regulations and.
If I may, Chairman, oh, sorry, can I ask a question or pose a question or comment to the audience?
I don't think that would be appropriate since we closed the public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Pedego, did you guys enter into any type of agreement with the well operator on the service road that's adjacent to the development to maintain dust control or anything like that?
We have not at this point. We're in discussions with them and we had a meeting scheduled last week that would have probably moved some of that a little further along. But because of the weather, it got canceled. We're rescheduling that meeting this week. And, you know, if you recall on the Watercrest development, what we agreed to do and what we're in the process of doing on some of those gas well roads is to put some, we, we took some of the millings off of Blue Mountain Road and put those on that gas well road to try to eliminate in the future. um, in the future, some of the dust that would be created by the trucks driving across those. You know, I think we're open to discussions on that with some of the property owners. Uh, Mrs. Radford, um, that spoke is, is somebody that, um, they live in, in the county, they don't, they're not a Hazlet resident, but they're obviously a neighbor. And we want to try to work something out that would be, um, that would fit within, that would be a good thing for the city of Hazlet to make sure that, you know, that you're not burying the brunt for a gas well that's in the county. Um, and your roads were getting beaten up by some of these trucks that have to get across the property, to serve a gas well that's in the county. But I understand the, the situation, we've seen it before. And I'm, I'm willing to, you know, discuss what that might look like going forward. I do need some input from the gas well operator though. And, you know, we'll, we'll do what we can to try to work something out that would be, um, the best for, for all parties involved between the city, the gas well company and the residents.
All right. Thank you very much for recognizing the public comment that was offered earlier. I appreciate you doing that. All right. Any other questions? Ms. Snedeker, I may have started talking you when you had a question.
No, that's it.
Any others?
Yeah, well, Paul Wallach again, just correct me if I'm wrong. I'm, I have a little bit hard time reading this stuff just on the screen, but I think on the surveyor certificate, I think we've seen this before, it mentions county of Denton. I don't know if that should be Tarrant County. Just if you have Mr. Bolt, take a look at that.
Yeah, that is just, that's just where they're being, uh, that's where their office is, Denton County. That has nothing to do with, um, the location of the plat.
All right, very good. That, they're located in Denton County?
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good. Um, on the, uh, where did I find it? The drainage plan. The, no, this is not the drainage plan. The southernmost street, the street just, um, north of, um, Blue Mountain Road. I don't think it has a name, um, but it, the drainage arrow indicates drainage to the west. And my question is, uh, that's going into what? Is, is that's, I think that's that access road, isn't it, for the gas well we were talking about, but, um, how is that being handled?
Yeah, this is, uh, Tom Dayton with J-Volt Consulting. Uh, I can probably help answer that one. Uh, Mr. Wallach, we, we have been in, in coordination with, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Radford's engineer. They have a stock pond that is on their property that, you know, I think they'd very much like to keep, uh, full of water and not be drained of water. You know, a lot of the water comes from, uh, this property, uh, the Brumball property. So we're, we're committed to, uh, allowing some of that runoff that's going to be generated from this development, roughly the same amount to, to, to flow into that pond so that they can maintain that for, uh, livestock or whatever they're using it for. Um, so there is some, there is some runoff there on that street that will go into an inlet, uh, run for a short period of time in storm drain line and then exit and, um, flow in via a swale, uh, to their pond. So there is, there is an amount, um, and we have coordinated with their engineer and will continue to do so, uh, to, to make sure that we're not increasing or decreasing the amount of water that's, that's coming onto their property.
And I assume that's acceptable to the city engineer? Travis?
Yes, sir. And that is consistent with Texas water code.
Right. Okay, so basically you're not going to increase what sheet flow goes on that property now? You're just, uh, maintaining that same CFS? That same flow?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Well, I'm sure Travis looked at that, was just curious. Uh, I noticed most of this is, and I can't, again, hard to see it. Is most of the subdivision going to be handled by sheet flow on the streets? And there's a few, uh, points where it's accumulated and then dumped into either existing ponds or into drainage canals, drainage ditches. Is that true? Most of it's sheet flow? Is it, i.e. there's not much underground storm suitor being built in this project?
Uh, no, there'll be a fair amount of storm drain lines that'll be installed with this project when it's all set and done. Uh, there is some of it, there is some truth to that, that, you know, we, we sheet flow it as, as long as we can, uh, before, uh, per city Hazlet's manual, we need to pick it up in a storm drain inlet and then run it underground to an acceptable, uh, outfall. Um, as you know, there's the, the big, uh, drainage that's, uh, goes, runs through the county, uh, and then onto our property to the north. Uh, some of, some of our storm drain lines will be discharging into that. Um, those receiving waters, which they currently do today. And then there also is, uh, on the east side, the spine road, if you will, the spine road, the main road that runs from Blue Mountain all the way up to Hazlet Parkway kind of serves as a little bit of a drainage divide between the drainage to the west and the drainage to the east. And how that's passing through Hazlet Parkway is, uh, via a bridge, uh, on the west side and I think a multi-box culvert on the east side. So to answer your question, it's kind of all of the above. There, some of the drainage is handled by sheet flow till it, till it becomes so much that it needs to be picked up, uh, in an inlet and all that's being done, uh, via Hazlet's, or I mean, sorry, per Ha- Hazlet's, uh, city criteria. And Travis will be looking at that and approving that at the time we come in with final plans as well.
Okay, yeah. My concern was just if we limit the number of inlets and then we overwhelm an inlet, say at the end of a significant amount of sheet flows and that had, could have an adverse impact on those residents right down there where that occurs. So, um, I'm sure, again, I'm sure Travis will look at that.
Yes, and, and as Tom stated, that, you know, um, they are following our criteria manual. Uh, one thing I, I would point out that, uh, Mr. Pettigo and, and Tom Dayton with Volk, J-Volt Consulting, uh, they have actually worked with the design engineer, uh, for Hazlet Parkway to make sure that there aren't two separate brains in the room, basically. Um, if you put two engineers in a room, you're going to get two different answers. It's just how it is. So they've actually used the design consultant for Hazlet Parkway to, um, help with their, their drainage calculations.
Very good. Okay, one other question, and Travis can probably answer this, but on, uh, street seven? I can read it. Street? No, not street seven. It's hard to see this. Street G. I'm assuming that you're showing a, an eight-inch water line. I'm so, I'm assuming that extends from street U. There's a fire hydrant at that intersection and then down at the end of that cul-de-sac, that line continues, uh, south. Is the fire hydrant, how far is that fire hydrant from lots 27 and 28? Does that meet, um, code, Travis? Or do we need a fire hydrant at the end of that line on street G?
The fire department did review these plans, uh, when it came in for preliminary plat. I believe, actually, um, the fire department doesn't want hydrants at the end of cul-de-sacs.
Correct.
Because you, you end up, uh, with, with bad situation with dead-end lines. So street G, yes, I'm looking at it now. Uh, the fire department did review these plans. Uh, obviously, when they get final engineering plans in, they'll review again. If there does need to be a hydrant there, that'll be added. But I think with everything right now, it is within fire code.
I forget what the distance is. It's been a while, but, yeah, you, you don't want, don't want to be down there at the end of that. Okay, um, and there are three points of interconnect that I could see past Paskey Drive. Couple other plate up there at Hazlet Parkway and then street O. Are those metered between, are those going to be interconnected with, with, um, Caraway?
Passway is, or Pass Drive or Pass Road. Recall that, that Intermodal is, is running from Hazlet Parkway to Blue Mountain Road as well. Uh, there, there's no interconnect on street O.
Okay.
So the only connection to, to Caraway would be Pass Road.
Okay, I guess that would be metered?
And define metered?
Uh, I guess I don't need to be there. It's all city water in the, in it.
Yes, yes.
All right, never, uh, I'm, I'm used to municipal or your district. Okay, that's all I had, I think. Oh, I have one, I have one other question, um, for Mr. Pettigo. The common areas, are they going to be using city water on those or is that well water? How are those going to be irrigated?
Uh, that's a good question. We, we, um, uh, on all of our projects have drilled water wells um, that serve as irrigation water. We put them into the ponds and then we pull out of those ponds for the open space. And, uh, so that's how everything gets irrigated.
Yeah, you're doing that in Caraway also, I guess.
Yes, Caraway and Watercrest and we.
Watercrest, all of that. Very good. I, I kind of thought that, just wanted to know. Thank you. That's all I have. Great, great.
Okay, are there any other questions for the city staff or the applicant? Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll open it up for a vote. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Hillborne, oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion first. Sorry, jumping the gun a bit there.
Can we, can we, can, uh, can we clarify options on this? So back to the instructions, this must pass. Is that correct still?
The, so administratively, this meets everything that was defined in the plan development. And if everything is consistent with the plan development and it meets our subdivision ordinance, there's not a basis for denial.
Okay, thank you.
Here, Catish, this is City Secretary Buchanan. Uh, if I could just remind that we have a quorum of regular members this evening and so Mr. Flax Bart would not be voting. Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
This is Jim Markson. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat as presented.
Is there a second?
Yeah, this is Paul Wallach, I'll second him.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Hillborne?
Yes.
Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yes.
And Greg Catish is a yes, so the motion passes. Okay, moving on, Agenda Item 5B, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act on a recommendation regarding a request for a site plan amendment to relocate more than 10 parking spaces at the Hazlet's Central Fire Station. The property is generally located on the east side of FM 156, approximately 1,300 feet north of FM 156 in Blue Mountain Road intersection, more commonly known as 1701 South FM 156 in the city of Hazlet. And we'll begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. The purpose of the site plan is to relocate, uh, parking spaces that are being affected by the widening of 156 that TechStop has planned. Um, just a little bit of background information, Hazlet Fire Station was, uh, developed in 2004 with 11 parking spaces, um, in front of the building and then nine parking spaces in the back of the building. Um, with the planned widening of 156, it's not going to affect the drive approaches on site. However, it is going to make it difficult for traffic maneuverability, uh, where the parking spaces currently are. So staff is proposing to relocate, um, three of those parking spaces and add additional parking spaces to the area just north of the, uh, existing fire station. And Dane, if you could go to the area, which I believe is the next attachment, it probably showed a little bit better, uh, graphic form. There you go. Thank you. Um, the, uh, based on the size of the fire station, uh, a total of 15 parking spaces are required for the fire station. After it's all said and done, if this amendment is approved, there'll be 35 parking spaces for the fire station. Um, along with your submittal tonight, you also have landscaping plans. Um, and those meet the, uh, city zoning ordinance as well. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you for the city staff presentation. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 5B? And we do also know that Mr. Halsey would like to speak on this agenda item. So if there's no other names, uh, being presented in the chat field, we'll call Mr. Halsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, I am, uh, opposed to this six-lane divided thoroughfare placed in Hazlet. It will forever change the character of Hazlet for which, uh, virtually everyone has moved out here for. And it's just a shame that, uh, we can't keep the character of our, uh, town. Uh, you know, I view P and Z as you're the gatekeepers. And so it starts with you. But unfortunately, this is, uh, going down the road. Uh, I am, my question would be, so because of the inconvenience and the relocation, is this going to be a city expense to, uh, bear this parking lot modification? Or is TechStop going to pay for this? But I do want it on record, I, I oppose, uh, the six-lane divided thoroughfare through Hazlet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Halsey. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 5B?
I'd like to make a comment and and be recognized.
Okay, Mr. Rhodes?
Um, you know, I, first of all, uh, the, the communication of the development or the expansion of the road of 156, uh, I learned about only because I happened to look at the agenda item that parking places, parking lot expansion was being moved. I feel like as a citizen, you know, the lack of communication transparency that we as citizens have about changes that are being proposed um, are occurring in a manner where there is no transparency or no communication to our community or to the neighborhoods that are going to be impacted. Uh, so is it a foregone conclusion that the expansion of 156, Highway 156 is, I know you don't have to answer this, but is that a foregone conclusion? Has it already been decided? How has this been communicated to the people of our community?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 5B?
Yes, I would like to speak. This is Kitty Wertz at 205 Thistle Drive. May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
I again oppose this issue. I agree with all that has been said before. I do not believe this has been communicated to our community well. I do not believe this has been communicated to our community well at all. I do not believe we want a thoroughfare through the middle of our city with a six-lane experience. And I think that this needs to be reconsidered.
Ms. Wertz, may I ask a question? Because I'm not sure I'm following your comment. You say you oppose this. Are you opposing the change in the parking or are you opposing the six-lane or the six-lane divided FM 156, which is not part of our agenda this evening? I want to make sure I understand what you're opposing.
Well, first of all, I don't think it was communicated through our community very well to let us know what was upcoming for our future development. So, I'm opposing that. I think probably if the parking lots to be moved, perhaps it should be moved behind the fire station. Who is to say what is needed in our future development? If that land is available to us, maybe we need to expand our fire station development. So, I just do not believe our communication has been well presented by our future plans. And I am opposed to a six-lane thoroughfare through our community. I go on record with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last chance, anyone else wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 5B? Okay, recognizing no one spoke up, we're putting their name in the chat field. We'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up for discussion. So, questions for the city staff from the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yeah, this is Paul Wallach. Question, has the state approached the city about taking the right-of-way that's depicted on that drawing or these are still preliminary plans?
This is Travis Atanasio, engineer. The state owns the right-of-way for FM 156. Therefore, if they choose to expand it, then that's what they're going to do. They do have public hearings, public meetings. Those should be mailed out, much as Haslet Parkway was mailed out to the public hearing and public meetings. You should get a postcard in the mail letting you know when those public hearings are. They have not approached the city at this point on acquiring right-of-way or any other property owner along the way. The reason for that is they are at 60% design. They are still deciding where to put the actual alignment, whether it moves a little bit to the east or a little bit to the west. That's still yet to be determined. What we're doing here is twofold, knowing that the front end of the parking will get cut off with right-of-way. We're looking at that, those couple spaces being hard to get in and out of. And two, currently, the fire station is underparked when they have training on Tuesday nights. There are cars everywhere. They are parking on the grass. They are parking in the back on the dirt. So, we're looking at that, adding these spaces. Further, if you look in the strategic plan, there is a possibility of turning the fire station into a public works facility in which fire station would move to another location. That would also need additional parking than the initial parking that's out there right now due to the number of public works equipment. So, this is kind of a future look ahead. This was approved in the strategic plan and we're going through the site plan process to make sure that we are within current city regulations in regards to landscaping. That's, the FM 156 expansion is happening, so we're just trying to react to it in real time. Thank you.
So, I guess one of the questions before is about, is this a city expense or will TechStop pay for it? Right now, this is a city expense, correct?
This is a city expense as the fire department needs additional parking now.
Right, okay. If TechStop, in fact, takes the property, takes the widen and then moves the right-of-way line to the east as depicted on that plan, I'm assuming they will purchase that property from the city, correct?
That's a call above my pay grade, honestly. I don't know how that works. That actually goes to council of whether they would donate that land or whether they would expect to be paid for it.
Okay, all right. But I'm just saying, they could have the option to donate it, but I guess the city can get reimbursed for that.
That would be, that would be a city council call.
Yeah, okay. Okay, all right, very good.
Mr. Atanasio, this is Greg. I've got a question. So, and this question is in response to a public comment that was made. So, at any point, does this Planning and Zoning Commission of the city of Haslet have an opportunity to offer an opinion, a direct opinion to the state of Texas on the widening project that they have planned for FM 156? As a appointed group of the city council, do we have any opportunity to offer opinion or perspective on their planned expansion?
Only through the public hearing and public meeting process.
So, not as a represented body of the city, or appointed body by the city council, do we act in any official capacity to offer input? It would be on an individual resident feedback process, is that correct?
Correct, because it is state, it is state right-of-way.
Okay, so I'm going to play that back just so that the public comments that were presented are clear, the Planning and Zoning Commission has no influence or decision-making on the widening project for FM 156. Okay, any other questions or comments? Is there a motion for Agenda Item 5B?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed plan.
Okay, there's been a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Paul Wallach.
Is there a second?
This is Jim, I'll second it.
Okay, the motion has been made, has been seconded, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Hillborn?
Yes.
Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yes.
And Greg Kaddish is a yes as well. So, that motion passes. Moving on, Agenda Item 5C, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act on a recommendation regarding a final plat of Lot 3 Block in the La Terras Town Center subdivision being 1.029 acres generally located southwest of the Abundale Haslet Road and FM 156 intersection. And we'll begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. If you recall, back toward the end of last year, you approved and city council approved a site plan for the first customer service oil change facility. This is the final plat that's accompanying that site plan. Staff has reviewed the civil plans for infrastructure needs and the final plat that's before you and found that it meets the city's design requirements. The plat meets the subdivision requirements and requirements of the Texas Local Government Code. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there anything you'd like to?
Not necessarily. We have, we have worked with the planning director and the city engineer and submitted the final plat application along with the seller.
Okay, and if there's no other comments that the applicant wants to make at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 5C? Okay, recognizing nobody put their name in the chat field or spoke during the opportunity, during the public hearing, we will close the public hearing and move to discussion. Is there any questions for the city staff or the applicant by the zoning commission members? Okay, if there are no questions, is there a motion?
This is Paul Wallach, I'll move to recommend approval of the final plat as submitted.
Okay, Mr. McCusson made a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Snedeker. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Hillborn?
Yes.
Ms. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. McCusson?
Yes.
And Greg Kaddish is a yes. Motion passes, thank you. Moving on, we don't need Agenda Item 6 or 7. And information on the status of current developments is included in the packet of information we received. Are there any questions for the city staff on any of the information that was presented in Agenda Item 8? Okay, since there are no questions, we'll move to Agenda Item 9, future agenda items. Anything specific that we need to be aware of this evening for future agenda items?
I'm not aware of anything that I have scheduled at this point in time.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 10, review the meeting calendar. Is there anything other than our normal, regular meeting that's occurring on March 29th that we need to be aware of at this time?
Nothing I'm aware of, sir.
Or Ms. Buchanan, anything else that you want to identify from a calendar perspective at this time?
No, sir, just, we plan on meeting that west Monday in March.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to Agenda Item 11, Ms. Snedeker?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
We are adjourned. The time is 7:30 PM. Thank you, everybody, for attending our call this evening and following our guidelines for joining a teleconference meeting as we did this evening. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
And you get a chance to say?